I called it. Order the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, California Wednesday, April sixth. Twenty twenty two. I called it. Order the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, California Wednesday, April sixth. Twenty twenty two. We have an echo. So I need to start again or? Okay. The next item is pledge allegiance. And Commissioner Prescott will send that pledge, please. Mr. Tanyan, would you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Prescott.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner Camp is not in attendance. Chair Proten McCann.
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler.
Here.
And Chair Randall.
Here.
And we'd like to welcome back Commissioner Hannah from. We'll call it maternity leave.
That's what you can call it.
She's a new mother, so congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item is special orders of business, special presentations. We have none. We have one set of minutes from the March second meeting. Do we have any changes or a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Prescott. We have a second. Again. Commission. McCacken. Commissioner Prescott.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler.
Want to abstain?
Commissioner McCann.
Yes.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Yes.
And Commissioner Randall is a yes, so we have. Five, one and one on approval of the minutes. The next item is. Oral and written communications. Member of the members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of Public Interest, which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone and if you desire, state your name and or city of residence. For the record, make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have any? Public wish to speak? We have no cards or appears to be none. Next item, businesses consent calendar and we have none. The next is public hearings. Time limitation for applicants, ten minutes. All other speakers, three minutes. It is cultural heritage permit twenty one oh five four. Casa Rosa duplex, one hundred Avenue Rosa and David Correo is making the presentation.
Good evening, Chair members of the Commission. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so before us tonight, we have the Casa Rosa duplex cultural heritage permit twenty one dash zero five four. The location of the project is at one forty two Avenue de Rosa. It's currently a vacant lot within the residential medium zoning district and architectural overlay district, and it's just outside of the coast zone. And to the right, we see the property highlighted. So again, the request is a cultural heritage permit, and this is for a new duplex building within the architectural overlay district. The fact that this property is within the architectural overlay district triggers this this cultural heritage permit. So the the scope of work here is it's a two story duplex building designing the Spanish colonial revival style of architecture. The building will have private open spaces per unit in the form of rooftop decks and balconies. One you can see here to the right. On the front elevation, and then also we have two two car tandem garages per per unit. Landscaping is also proposed along the front of the property and then minimal landscaping along the sides of the property. We do have California native and drought tolerant landscaping along with two trees as it's required for code. And the the planting legend providing the plans. Give us more details as to what is being proposed here. So the the purpose of this analysis, again, what triggers this is the fact that the property is within the architectural overlay district. And this is mainly to maintain and enhance the city's character, which is the Spanish village by the sea. So we'll go ahead and cover what the designer review subcommittee reviewed in the following slide. But staff did find that the project is consistent and compliant with the development standards, including height setbacks, parking and landscaping. And we did have two rounds with the design review subcommittee. The first. Proposal that came before the subcommittee was not as consistent with the design guidelines. So the main comment and direction to staff and the applicant was to revisit and review the design guidelines and come back a second round. And also to simplify the design of the building. So here we see to the left what the original proposal was. We and to the right, we see the revised design. So we see how we go from a more busy front elevation in this example to a more simplified version of this, still keeping the Spanish colonial revival style. We see some doors being arched. We see some changes to the windows. We see some decorative gable vents being added, as well as some changes to the materials on doors. On the garage doors and front entry doors. And then one thing to note, too, we got rid of the chimney or fireplace that would project out down at the front. So per staff's analysis in the staff report, we did find that the project is consistent with design guidelines and general plan policies, as well as with the architectural overlay district goal. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. And we do, I believe we do have the applicant. And property owner available for any questions. And this concludes my. Presentation.
Hi, David. Would the applicant like to make a statement or? Okay, and I want to say it was a pleasure working with you guys and appreciate. Getting this thing to this point. Okay. I will close the presentation then, David, and open it up to public comment. I see no cards or additional public other than the applicant. So we can open it up for commission comments. Like to make any comments or?
I I was just going to thank our colleagues on the design review subcommittee for their revisions. They look good to me. Looks like a good project.
Yeah, I I just want to say that I think this is a great project. I appreciate the applicant working with us and taking our suggestions to heart and and revising it. And supportive of the project.
I don't have any comments.
I drove by there today and I think this is a really nice addition to that street. Okay, do we have a motion then to? And I will say again that it was a pleasure when the applicant came to design review the first time. They had not gone through the process before, didn't realize what the city requirements were, and once they saw them, they complied and did a great job and thank you very much. So do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve. This project and number one, we determined that the project is exempt from CEQA. Number two, we adopt the resolution PC twenty two dash zero zero seven. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California approving the cultural heritage permit twenty one dash zero five or Casa Rosa duplex to consider the construction of the two story duplex building on a vacant lot located in the architectural overlay district.
We have a second. Second, second by Commissioner McCacken. Take a vote, Commissioner Prescott.
I.
Commissioner McCacken. I.
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 And Commissioner Randall is an I also, so passes. Six, one.
Six, zero.
We have one vacant.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
One absent tonight. So our next item, we have no more public hearing items is new business. And we have the general plan strategic information implementation program update. However, are you online here?
Yes, I am here. Good evening, planning commissioners. So this is a request for the planning commission to recommend city council an update to the general plan strategic implementation program. So the strategic implementation program is an annual exercise the city does with the city's annual budget review and long term financial paper. As a way to ensure the general plan adequately evolves with changing needs and circumstances within the community. And to solidify commitment to the city's long term vision. And we do this by reviewing the status of past priorities and determining future priorities for the coming year based on our available resources. So additionally, the annual update to the strategic implementation program also allows us to reevaluate which the department is responsible for executing each of the implementation measures. So. Ultimately, with the recommendation from the planning commission, the planning commission's feedback is sent to the city council as part of a long term financial paper that will be reviewed within the coming weeks alongside a budget workshop. And so this slide shows a review of the status of the strategic implementation program. There are eight high priority implementation measures, which I can mention that implementation measures for the commissioners or anyone from the public in attendance, implementation measures are one time projects with definitive endpoint, or they can also be ongoing programs that happen throughout the year. So we have eight high priority items, in which fifty percent are completed, seventeen percent are started, and zero percent are not started. Those are, there's none that have been not started. So the performance measure is that we at bare minimum start them, so we have succeeded in that realm with high priority items. For medium items, we have eighteen total, and this encapsulates all departments and divisions. So eleven percent completed for medium priority items, sixteen percent started, forty four percent not started. Low priority items, we have twenty one of which three percent are completed, six percent started and fifty eight percent not started. And then we have a total of one hundred fifty seven ongoing mutation measures, which I mentioned previously are items or programs that will not have an end date, per se. So in addition to the extensive list of projects and programs in the strategic implementation program, we have other items that city council directs staff to pursue and which are not always directly listed as implementation measures. These include items that we have ongoing throughout the year. So on the slideshow. Here, the this shows the planning divisions' work schedule at the moment in in staff's report. Able to list each department's progress on twenty twenty one priorities and their projected priorities for the twenty twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. The main point is that we want to give you a complete picture of the work city council directs us to complete, and we are at times limited by the resources that we have, but we simply follow direction on what council directs us to consider a priority, regardless of the implementation. So the staff report provides attachments of the changes to last year's strategic implementation program. The changes proposed and rather than going through each one individually, if anyone has questions about one in particular or numerous ones, we can discuss that. There was also a supplemental memo with attachments of the same implementation measures given to the planning commissioners before the meeting, and it's just reordering the implementation measures in a way that may be easier to read. It's prioritized. I'm sorry, it's categorized in alphabetical order by the element topic and then separated by high need or low priority. I'm not aware of any public comments on this item, and so, yeah, so that that includes staff presentation, and I'm here to answer your questions. If anyone has any.
Thank you, Kyle. Would you give a quick? Synopsis of how the data is gathered and who provides the input for you to create the charts?
Sure. So the community development department's planning specifically, we look at last year's table and which includes, again, all divisions and departments of the city. And we send out kind of an instructional task for the other divisions to update their their specific implementation measure. So if they're going to change the status of an implementation measure from low priority to medium priority, they do that, and then in the attachments that you see on the far right column, there are notes, and those notes are just describing why there were changes. And those notes will also explain if something has not been started, the reasons why if there's some lack of financial or staff resources, maybe the reason why it hasn't begun or work hasn't begun on a specific project, but some divisions will also change one time implementation measures to ongoing because they find that they will be doing this, this specific implementation measure for a considerable amount of time. And so they provide their edits to their own implementation measures. Planning staff collects them and provides it to the planning commission, city council into one table now in this report provided in separate attachments, multiple tables. We separate them by ones that have have a definitive and ones that are ongoing, and then the ones that we have completed since two thousand fourteen with certification of the general plan.
Thank you. Does you have any questions for Kyle? I see none. Okay, and the action you want us to take, Kyle, is?
You know, I chair, I can assist with that. Yeah, there's two two recommended actions. The first is determinative review of the project has been completed according to the California Environmental Quality Act, and the second is adopt a resolution PC twenty two approval of this next fiscal year strategic implementation plan.
Thank you, Adam.
So on the first one, let's do a vote on to determine the review of the project has been completed according to the California Environmental Quality Act. I will make a motion that we do that. Do we have a second? Second, second by Commissioner McCacken. Commissioner Prescott.
I.
Tyler.
I.
Commissioner McCann.
I.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
I.
And Commissioner Randall is also an I, and the next one is, do we have a motion to adopt resolution PC twenty two oh oh five recommending approval of the FY two twenty twenty two, twenty three SIP.
Make that motion.
Motion by Prescott. We have a second. I will second the item then. So motion by Prescott. Randall. And Commissioner Prescott.
I.
Commissioner McCacken.
I.
I.
Commissioner McCann.
I.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
I.
And Commissioner Randall is also an I. I do have a question now for. I'll do that under new business. We are in new business. Over the years in the past, we've had kind of a survey that checked the efficiency of the planning department, and now that we're coming back up to full speed, I think it would be nice to find out if the city council would want us to bring to light what our high point was in efficiency. To give us a target to get the planning department back into that efficiency. Would that be appropriate?
I I'm always happy to talk about staff's productivity. I will say that the performance measures are reported on a quarterly basis and provided on an annual basis in the city's budget process. If if the planning commission would like a snapshot, a historical snapshot of what actions and the efficiency with which those actions are taken by the planning staff over the past couple of years. You know, as a as a comparison, I'm more than happy to to provide that. I will say that looking at performance measures for multiple divisions over the past couple of years has been interesting because there has been a lot of of things that have impacted staff's productivity. Be it a COVID related items, which would involve the shutting down of public counter, the opening of home offices to assist in in staff's ability to socially distance within the office to some issues related to short staffing. It it's it's it, there would be a lot of qualitative analysis that I would want to provide in addition to this, the quantitative numbers reported. At this point in time, I can tell you, we are, we have a vacant senior planner position that we are currently recruiting for. It's in the in the process of being recruited and in office specialists, too. And other than that, we are, we're, we're still catching up a little bit from previous vacancies. But within, I hope, a couple of months, we will be fully staffed, and at that time, I I would, I would love to have the conversation about where we, where we've, where we've been, where we've come from and where we want to go.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I was more interested in making sure that all the new staff and the new group know what the past performances and and that they target, that that's the goal to reach that or exceed it.
Exceeding it is my, is my expectation. So that that I'm currently working on improvements to the to the division. This is a great time to do it. We've got some new staff. And we've also got. We've got the, the end of COVID is in sight. I don't want to say anything that would jinx it, but we have that insight, and this is just a really good opportunity to create something new and and special for our customers.
Thank you. The next item is establishment, establish the meeting time for regular meetings of the study section and planning commission. Adam presented this a couple of weeks ago and I wanted to. Mr. Tyler wasn't here, and I'm not sure everyone was here, but I tell them what your goal is and what proposal is, and we'll see if it affects anyone who wasn't present.
Yes, Chair Randall, thank you. So this item, and I'm glad that we're we're at this point in the meeting so far, because this is, I think, really going to take some time. I I believe that I've come communicated with the planning commissioners individually or within an open meeting about this topic. But essentially. Staff is is recommending that the planning commission's meetings be adjusted to be to start at six PM for the regular meetings and five PM if there's a study session. And there's a few reasons for this. The first is this is, this will be more in line with like the council start time for their regular meetings. It for meetings that tend to go on for a while. It it can be, it can affect staff's time, especially overtime or it may require them to flex time more than more than some other meetings would. And and the reason for that is that the city hall tends to close around five thirty. And this regular meeting doesn't start for another hour and a half. So there's an hour and a half staff time that we're, we're just dealing with before the meeting even starts. The other, the final reason is when it's a seven o'clock meeting start time and there's no study session, what we've tended to do is just move the meeting, the regular meeting to start at six PM, and the constant back and forth between the meetings with the study session and the ones without get a little confusing, and I would, I would prefer that we just know every meeting starts at six. If there's a study session, then it starts at five, but in no case would we start a regular meeting at five. And so that's my recommendation. I'm more than happy to answer any questions or address any concerns. And if that, if the commission would like to support that recommendation, then our, we would ask the planning commission adopt resolution number PC twenty two dash zero zero six, including in your, in your binders. Makes sense.
Anyone have a problem with that or?
I'm glad, I'm glad you guys are doing this.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move, I'll go ahead and move. Yeah, I'll go ahead and move approval of resolution PC twenty two dash zero zero six. Resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, establishing the meeting time and location for all regular meetings of the planning commission and planning commission study session.
You have a motion by Commissioner Cosgrove. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Prescott.
I will say yes for efficiency inconsistency.
Commissioner McCacken.
I.
I.
Commissioner McCann.
I. I.
And Commissioner Randall is also on six and one absolute. Reports of commissioner and staff. Let's see, Adam, do you have anything on the future agenda? Here, I noticed it was highlighted, that's why. Bring it up.
Let me get it back to my agenda. My apologies. So staff, you know, the only updates I had, I actually just mentioned related to staffing. We are, we are getting, we are getting quite caught up. Which is, which is a good thing in conjunction with the building department, the delays that the city city hall experienced towards the end of last year and beginning of this year are being addressed, and and we are doing everything in our power to make sure that people who apply to for permits to either improve their property or bring some much needed services to the city in various industries, we're doing everything in our power to get, to get them on their way or at least get their projects reviewed in a, in a timely fashion. Other than that, what I will say related to the TFA, which is provided in in your binders each for each meeting. I did want to touch on this just briefly. This is Um, I did want to touch on this just briefly. This is our tentative future agenda. I have been working with planning staff to uh, develop some some basic policies about uh, how items get added to this agenda. At typically, uh, and this has changed depending on who the city planner is. Uh, but over the years, um, it has, it has, it has become. Utilized when it is a, it is for certain that something will be on the agenda. And what I'm, what I'm moving towards is a, a best guess scenario. Um, and the point of that is so that we, so that staff can uh, plan out their projects. With with a longer-term perspective rather than. Only putting items on there when we are a hundred percent sure. That the item will go and that limits us to basically planning things out about two weeks, three weeks ahead of time. Not, not that things are planned that way, but we're only reporting that something's tentative if it's. Very clear, it it is actually going to go to that meeting. So that's going to have two results. One is we're going to start seeing more thing, more items on the TFA. Um, and that's good because we want to, you know, as as administrative staff. We want to make sure that um, the meetings are, you know, we're not. Having meetings with one item, one week and it's, you know, five items another week that we can, we're we're planning out reasonable meetings. Um, but also it provides a little bit more uh. Transparency and assurances to our customers as far as what our timeline looks like to get them through the, through the process. And then the final uh, impact is going to be that there are going to be times where things change. Uh, because of situations that that occur either. You know, we're, we get assurances from an applicant that we're going to receive certain items by a certain date and we don't, and that pushes them back. Meetings get canceled and then that would um. Uh, affect, you know, subsequent meeting times, uh, things of that nature. So it it, I want to emphasize, it is tentative. The items on it are our best guess as to when they're going, but in an effort to schedule things out in a long distance. In a longer term uh, timeframe. Um, I'm going to have, I'm going to have staff start filling this up a little bit more. So if there's ever any questions on that, feel free to reach out to me at any time. I'm always happy to. To talk about um, our projects or or where they're going and how soon we can get uh, get them to a decision point. Uh, and that's all I have, Chair.
Uh, I will say one thing for the benefit of the commission. At our last um, design review board meeting. Commissioner Cosgrove was uh, in the audience and was able to attend and. I would encourage everyone to see. What happens at design review board and how it goes. But Adam, there would be, it is a potential on Brown Act violation. So there'd be certain things that would have to occur that uh. Adam would let you uh. Summarize those or mal, just basically not participate in the meeting. And just observe only.
Yes, if we're talking about attendance at other meetings. A commissioner certainly can take part in the meeting, but if the item is going to come back to the commission at some point. Or or come to the commission as an appeal or as an initial item. Um, there may be a difficulty in being part of that item at the commission level, right? If the commissioner has spoken at a previous meeting. Due to common law conflicts of interest. So if you plan to attend a meeting where you might speak on an item that will come to us, you should talk to me first. Because that could conflict you out of a future meeting here.
But as a silent observer. You are welcome and uh, I would probably suggest giving Adam a heads up. Before you do so, but uh, I think uh. Commissioner Cosgrove uh, had a good perspective of what goes on there and uh, how we prepare to get projects to. The commission, so. That's that, so that was uh, we'll take that as a report of a commissioner instead. And the next item is an adjournment. Do we have a? Motion for adjournment, adjournment. I move adjournment. Okay, we will be returning to the April twentieth, twenty twenty-two at six PM at the San Clemente uh, Community Center. Do we have a second? Second, second by uh, Commissioner McCacken, Commissioner Prescott.
I.
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 And Commissioner Crandall is also an I, so congratulations and.